Well, good evening, everybody. And welcome to the regular city council meeting for April the 16th, 2018. And before every council meeting, we have about fifteen minutes for you to just come up to the mic if you'd like to talk to city council, pretty laid back, I guess you would say, and have a discussion. But I would like to announce that we're -- if you want to talk during the city council meeting, I would like to have you sign up. And so is Andrea Stein here? Going once?
Get your -- let me get your hammer.
No, I didn't hammer anything. But if you want to talk during the city council meeting to the council, I want -- I'd like you to at least fill out one of these cards. And we're going to limit to three minutes. So Andrea Stein had called ahead and wanted to be on the agenda, but I still want Andrea Stein to fill one of these out. So Andrea Stein will have enough time until we get to step two where it says citizens request to speak to city council. After that, we're not going to do any more of that. Okay? Good. We all know the rules. So anybody who would like to go out and address the mic, now's your time. Not yet. We didn't -- not yet. Okay. Hearing and seeing none. I would then like to call to order. And is Greg Swearingen here? Well, not doing too good this evening, are we? So let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Haquez?
Here.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Here.
Councilmember Turner? Whoops. Can't do that one yet, sorry. Councilmember Dorito?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you like to ask for approval of the minutes for the April 2nd, 2018 special city council meeting? And -- okay. At this time, just on those special city council meeting notes, minutes, are there any corrections? Could I have a motion from council?
I'd make a motion. Did we accept the council minutes or the approval of minutes from the 4-2 of 18 special city council meeting, 412 special meeting, and the 4-4 general government meeting?
Second. Okay. I don't think we were going to do that. Are we going to do that for the April 12th as well?
It's on there.
All right. Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Second? Okay. Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Uh, councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Dorito?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Trout -- oh.
Now, I would like to, but I can't.
I'm sorry.
Put a big X on his left.
The motion carries.
He's a soft spot.
No. Ryan. Uh, we -- at this time, number four, we would like to go ahead and administer the oath to our newly appointed official, Caitlin Turner. Caitlin, would you approach the podium, please?
I'm Caitlin Turner. Presiding at 205 South Coppelwood Avenue. Do you solemnly swear that I will honor and uphold the constitutions, laws, and regulations of the United States? Of the United States? And the state of Colorado, and the state of Colorado, the Charter, and the Charter, ordinance this laws and regulations of the city of Canyon City, and faithfully perform the duties I'm about to act on. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're glad to have you here.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here.
Okay. Thank you. That side over there is really chatty, so you'll have to try and calm them down. Oh, no way, no way.
You just entered into the --
Okay. We did get our signature, right? Okay. All right. Make sure. All right. Good. Okay. Any city council announcements? Any members of the city council have any announcements?
I would -- mayor, I would like to add to the Wednesday general government agenda item in regards to a building permit complaint.
And that's for the?
The Wednesday general government meeting.
Okay. What date is that? The 18th?
I'm sorry? Eighteenth?
Eighteenth?
Wednesday, the 18th?
Yep. All right. Okay. We can do that. Would you note that? Anybody else?
Let's have a little announcement there. A lot of people probably have seen online, there's a downtown survey going around for getting an idea for consumers on shopping and other things that people would like to see downtown. And I would just highly recommend that everybody take the time to get online and fill that out. And also, a lot of you folks on this dais and also in the audience have access to a lot of contacts and to spread the word. And I've noticed in the efforts I've made to reach out to people to fill it out, that a lot of folks are really eager to put in their two cents. They really want to see downtown succeed, and this is one way that they can help get that kick started.
And where can they find that?
Um, Patrick or, um, I thought Ryan, is he down here? Ryan, can you come up and explain that a little bit?
Yeah. The downtown survey can be found on the city's website under the business section, and it's also available on Facebook under facebook.com/Canyon City Economic Development. It's pinned at the top of the page.
And I had some people ask, are there hard copies that can be filled out?
I can print some copies, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to get some of those for some folks.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Mr. Hamrick?
Yes. I have one thing, actually. I have the video of the school safety meeting conducted by our school district where they described in some detail the -- how the safety of our students is ensured by the actions, policies, and procedures that they have. And I'd like to ask permission to post this or have this posted on the city's website so that we can get it the biggest audience that we can.
Is -- who would in -- yes. You need to give that probably to Tony. We could do that.
Thank you.
Tony, are we allowed to put that on our channel as well on TV?
Yeah, we could do that, both.
So maybe we could do both.
Mr. Meisner?
Uh, you have a meeting on Wednesday at four o'clock, a vision meeting?
I do. Yes.
Just letting everybody know. And --
Well, I didn't get to talk yet.
Oh. Okay. And I would like to welcome and introduce Jerry. She's our temporary interim city clerk who's graciously stepped up to help us through this time of change. So she could be here for the next couple of weeks or couple of years. The other thing is, it's maybe appropriate, the mayor touched on it, but we had a really productive treat today. Retreat today. And one of the things that we tried to address, not we tried, that we addressed, was to try to bring safety and order to these meetings. The little sheets that you sign up with, there'll be some minor changes in that, but essentially what we're trying to do is we're trying to get people that want to speak to council to sign up. We want to limit all people to a three-minute timeframe with maybe a little two-minute rebuttal, but to keep that whole process safe and productive for everybody that's involved. So you'll see some more information coming out on that.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Then I would like, I have to have a motion or I'd like to have a motion for a special city council meeting for April the 18th. This is for the -- to award, it says the 2A project. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
So I would need a motion to have a meeting at five o'clock, so it would be after, apparently after the general government meeting.
Wouldn't that be pending a decision that we make today?
That's what I was --
You're just motioning to set the special meeting, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And I guess if we didn't need it, we don't have to do it.
Sure.
But we need to set a meeting just in case. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we have a special meeting on, you said Wednesday?
That's the 18th.
Wednesday, the 18th, five o'clock, to consider any 2A projects.
Second?
Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Would you call? Any discussion on that, on that motion? Would you call? Call, please.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dorito?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor Protem, sorry, Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Then I also need a motion and a second for a special city council meeting for Wednesday the 25th at 3:30 to discuss the Black Hills franchise agreement. Anya?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we have a public meeting set for Wednesday, the 25th, at 3:30 for the Black Hills franchise agreement discussion.
Second?
Second, Ms. Turner, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dorito?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Item number six is introduction to the 2018 Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival court. Ladies, could you step up front here to the podium?
I have a question. Can I have a mom moment?
You can have a -- certainly you can.
Take some pictures.
Okay. We have President Cassie Groh and Christie DeGarmo. Cassie?
Good afternoon, council. We just wanted to take a moment to extend our sincere thank you on behalf of the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Committee to you and the members of council, the Canyon City department heads and staff for all of your ongoing support year after year for the Blossom Festival activities. In honor of our festival's anniversary this year, the 2018 festival theme will be a throwback to the 1980s. The 80s were a unique era full of colors, extreme fashion, sky-high hair, and iconic music. So we're hoping that we see everybody break out those brightly colored leg warmers, parachute pants, stonewashed jeans, fluff your hair, and come celebrate Blossom's 80th birthday, May 2nd through the 6th, because dude, it's the 80s. So without further ado, let me introduce the 2018 Blossom royalty.
Please, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Solana Short, the 2018 Canyon City Blossom Festival Miss Personality. The Canyon City Blossom Festival can trace back to the 1860s when the first recorded mention of the festival was published in the Canyon City Times newspaper. Back then, the festival was held in the fall to celebrate the harvest. During the 1880s, Canyon City residents celebrated the Fruit Day acknowledging bountiful harvests and spring neighboring communities together. In the 1900s, Fruit Day became May Day. May Day eventually turned into the Flower Carnival. The Flower Carnival turned into Blossom Day. Finally, in 1938, Canyon City saw its first Blossom Festival. This year, the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival is celebrating the 80th anniversary. This festival can, has constantly, has been the longest-running and best event in the city's history. Rain or shine, the festival is always held during the first full weekend of May. This year's Blossom Festival kickoff on Wednesday, May 2nd, when the Rites and Amusement Giant Carnival opens on Elm Avenue between South 9th Street and Oak Creek Grade Road. Wednesday, May 2nd, is also canned food night at the carnival. Bring two cans of food and receive $5 off your wristband. All cans of food will be donated to our local loaves and fishes. Thursday, May 3rd, the carnival is open from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and is family night. Carnival growers can purchase four wristbands for $60 with their coupon. People may bring the coupon to get the discount. The coupon can be printed from Blossom's website, our Facebook page, and can be cut out of the shopper and daily record. Because there is no school on Friday, May 4th, in honor of Blossom's 80th anniversary, the carnival opens at noon and closes at midnight. Saturday's carnival hours are from 10:00 AM until midnight, and Sunday from 11:00 AM until 10:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Short.
My name is Emma Enslo, and I'm the 2018 Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival's second attendant. In 1940, the Canyon City Blossom Festival began incorporating band competitions in the festival. Now, the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival is a national band championship competition. It is Colorado's only community-run band festival and is the largest competition in the state. The festival features national high school, middle high, or middle school, and junior high school bands in competition areas of concert band, jazz band, orchestra, and parade. Competitions are held at both Canyon City High School and Florence High School beginning Wednesday, May 2nd through Saturday, May 5th. A full schedule can be found on our website at ccblossomfestival.com. This year, the Blossom Festival Committee has added a choir competition, which will be held on Wednesday, May 2nd, at Florence High School. Admission to the competitions are free and open to everyone. We encourage everyone to go and listen. In an effort to provide a little something for everyone in the community, the Blossom Festival Committee began partnering with the U.S. Forest Service to sponsor a bird walk activity in order, in honor of World Migratory Bird Day. Unifying our voices for bird conservation is the World Migratory Bird theme for 2018, the Year of the Bird. We will meet at the Arkansas River Trailhead parking area just east of Cell Avenue off of 9th Street on Friday, May 4th, at 8:00 AM. We will enjoy a leisurely walk along the Arkansas River Walk while locating and identifying migratory and other birds found here in Canyon City. This is a free event open to anyone, children and adults, interested in birds and their conservation. We encourage everyone to bring binoculars and outdoor clothing suitable for the weather. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Enslo.
My name is Lydia Bright, and I'm the 2018 Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival's first attendant. The 14th Annual Run Blossom Races, organized and hosted by FAR, also known as Fremont Adventure Recreation, kicks off Saturday morning, May 5th, at Centennial Park. The half marathon begins at 7:30 AM, and the 5K race begins at 8:30 AM. The races take place along the beautiful Canyon City Arkansas River Walk. Run Blossom is also a qualifying race for the Boulder Boulder held in Boulder, Colorado on Memorial Day, and is a wonderful way to begin your Blossom Saturday. People can register online now by visiting runblossom.org. In person, registrations will occur on race day at Centennial Park from 6:45 AM to 8:15 AM. And that's also super fun because we get to give away the awards at that. So it's a really fun event, and I encourage people to take part in it. Blossoms in the Park is our awesome craft fair and kids' zone at Veterans Park, filled with fun, live entertainment, and great food. Blossoms in the Park features more than 100 vendors from across Colorado and many neighboring states offering creative gifts, custom jewelry, gourmet foods, and more. The kids' zone area offer are lots of fun with tumble bubbles and laser tag this year. A full lineup of free entertainment is provided all day Saturday and Sunday on the Veterans Park stage. Blossoms in the Park entertainment will begin on Saturday, May 5th, at 10:00 AM until 7:00 PM, and Sunday, May 6th, from 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM. A full schedule of the entertainment can be found at ccblossomfestival.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright.
Good evening. My name is Gabriella Gonzalez, and I am the 2018 Blossom Queen, oh, Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Queen. Each year, the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Committee selects an individual from our area who has made significant contributions to our community. We are honored to have Mr. Donald T. Packard serve as this year's grand marshal for the festival and lead us down Main Street during the 80th Annual Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Parade. The parade will begin at 1:00 PM on Saturday, May 5th, along Main Street in beautiful downtown Canyon City. The final parade lineup will be posted on the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival website and Facebook page by Sunday, April 29th. It will also be published in the Canyon City Shopper and Daily Record during Blossom Week. We have 25 bands scheduled to march in the 80th Parade, including this year's special guests, the United States Army 4th Infantry Division marching band from Fort Carson. Finally, the Blossom Festival's Cluster Duck will be held on May 5th in Macon Plaza. Staying with the festival's theme, dude, it's the 80s. The Cluster Duck lineup offers a mix of popular music from the 1980s. Taking the Cluster Duck stage at 5:00 PM, the Indigo Way Band will open up the night with live music warming up the crowd as they get ready to rock the night away with Cluster Duck's headlining act, Paramount. Paramount is an 80s rock band tribute, offering a high-energy show that promises to be fun for the whole family. They will perform 80s anthems from Journey, REO, Speedwagon, Death Leopard, Poison, Bon Jovi, Guns N' Roses, and much more. I'm sure you guys know all of them. Cluster Duck gates open at 4:30 PM, and the cover charge is only $5. Thank you for letting us come tonight and talk about the festival. All of the festival's information can be found on our website, ccblossomfestival.com, and our Facebook page. You can always, and you can always find us in the Daily Record and the Shopper over the next few weeks. We hope to see you, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Thank you.
If it pleases, council, we would like to get a picture with all of you in our beautiful courts.
Us with those beautiful young ladies? Us old guys?
Yeah.
Wow. Let's do it. We don't get a chance of that.
Do you guys think you --
Jim, it goes with the leather jacket.
Yeah. Where is the leather jacket? Should we do it? See? This is personal. Has totally your call. Dolly, do you want to take a picture? Dolly? Yes, please. Do you have your phone on? This is a non-Hollywood scene. Can you get them all in? I'm taking a couple more. Mine is really slow. Dolly, I know, your daughter's proud of you. There you go. Proud of you. One more. Congratulations. Say one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Number seven, seven is the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Could we have a view from the administrator, please?
Mayor and council, item 5A would authorize the mayor's execution of a 40-foot-wide drainage easement from CB builders at 212 Storm Ridge. 5B would authorize the mayor's execution of a 30-foot-wide drainage easement for CB builders at 216 Storm Ridge. 5C would authorize temporary street closure at the 1200 block of College Avenue on August 7th from 3:30 PM to 7:30 PM for the National Night Out Against Crime. 5D would authorize temporary street closure for the 600 and 700 blocks of Main Street on May 19th for the 11, from 11:00 AM to midnight for the flashback on Main Street event. Two bids, 34-18 would award electrical service contract for the work at Centennial Park for its renovation to Territory Electric of Canyon City in amount not to exceed $21,065. The other bid is 35-18. It would award a bid for a new hydrovacuum excavator. The current one is 14 years old, so this will be replacing it. And it would be awarded to Ditch Witch of the Rockies in an amount not to exceed $79,878.25.
Okay. My questions? My questions of Tony?
Is there a change? Is there a change in this memo?
No, the rec should be the same firm. Ditch Witch of the Rockies. Is there any confusion?
Well, I thought we already had one of these in our pamphlet.
I wasn't sure. That's why we brought an extra one.
Oh, okay.
I think a few had been missing, so I wanted to make sure you had it from bottom.
Administrative confusion.
Sorry about that. Or diversion. Yeah.
At this time, are there any additions or? Ms. Gonzalez, did you have a question?
No. I just was asking if it was this memo.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a movement that we adopt the agenda, consent agenda.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? None? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dorito?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Does the administrator have a report?
Just two items. First, we recognize, clearly, on behalf of all the city council staff, recognizing Kathy Robbie for her 20 years of outstanding service to the city. We're trying to work with Kathy so she can provide us some ongoing services to facilitate this transition. And also, we want to recognize, as you've, I think, Councilmember Meisner already had, but Jerry Stately to be able to step in and take care of that job this week, and also for Denise for stepping up this past week. We, big round of applause, and we thank Jerry for her 40 years' experience. She's going to need him with us.
Working with this group.
That it?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, zone, number 10 is a zone change for 1145 Ohio. It's removing restrictions of C commercial use related to municipal offices and operations on site. This went to the planning commission March 28th, and I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing at this time for ordinance number nine, series 2018. This is the first reading. The public hearing is open, and could I have a report from the city planner, please?
Good evening, mayor and council. This evening, we are here to consider the matter of a zone change request for 1145 Ohio Avenue. This would be, this would take the form of the adoption of ordinance nine of 2018, amending section 17.24.050 to permit city, county, state, and federal facilities, uses, and buildings on site. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of Yale Place and Ohio Avenue. It is addressed as 1145 Ohio Avenue. This parcel consists of lots seven and eight and a portion of lot six, Fair Park subdivision section three, which was originally platted in 1970. Together, all three parcels comprise approximately 31,925 square feet. Based upon the zoning that was in place at the time, it was anticipated that these properties would develop for residential use. Residential development, however, did not occur at this location.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Councilmember Dorito.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all. And I would like to thank Ms. Swetlick for her effort and the information sent to the Leadville mayor. He appreciates it. Great job. I really appreciate it. The city of Leadville has gone, is going through cer- some of the similar things that we are with, abandoned and ranshackled homes. And the mayor, who I know, contacted me and wanted to know what we did because I think we've been reasonably successful and Dina did an excellent job in getting him back the information, so I appreciate it. Okay. Number 11 is Resolution, Resolution Number Five, two thousand eighteen, proposed use of design, bid, build process for the two thousand eighteen to A street improvement project. Could we have a report from the city engineer?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
What happened to nine?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Neither of the doctors were here, they were both sick.
Doctors were sick.
Yeah. They'll both be here on May the seventh.
Sorry.
I hated to interrupt, but I-
It's okay. It's interesting that you would ask that. Well now, okay, a report from the city engineer.
I can provide you first a little introduction. We'd asked the council table Resolution Number Five, which is this item. Given a recent conversation we had with Keywood Construction and A and S, there seems to be a strong interest on both parties' part to partner. And in order to do that, we would have to have this special meeting, which you've proposed to schedule on Wednesday at five P.M., to allow the staff to have discussions and the council have discussions with these entities. Keywood's proposing to be the contractor of record and A and S would be a subcontractor, but don't let that mislead you. About seventy percent of this project is paving and that's what they would be doing, which is their core experience and expertise. We think it is a potentially win-win scenario for the community. But we would, in order to allow for you to consider that and discuss that, we'd have to postpone this measure tonight, bring it to you on Wednesday, have a further discussion, authorize the staff to negotiate, which is permitted under the RFP process, to come back to the council with a maximum price guarantee from the contractor. We know at the minimum it will be less than what they proposed because the asphalt work that A and S will be doing on a unit cost basis is less than what Keywood's proposing. So we know this will generate additional savings to the city and to the taxpayers. So. Any questions? I mean, Adam certainly here.
Mr. Meisner?
I don't have a question about that because I think that's due for Wednesday, but relative to Resolution Number Five, I do have some questions.
Sure.
That I think would make sense to at least discuss so that if the option on Wednesday doesn't go through, it was my understanding from the information from councils is that council was wanting to have any design that was done for street reconstruction to be created by a third-party engineering firm and that that was not open for negotiation. Two is that the supervision of that work would also be through a third-party engineering firm. And the way that I read item number, at least two, I don't read number two in terms of that mandating that the city engineer, and this is nothing against Adam, and we've got a long history of agreeing and disagreeing, but I just think item number two should say that the engineer shall contract with, and not say shall, with the assistance of an outside contractor. That language needs to be a little more affirmative in terms of that he is essentially going to contract with an outside contractor.
That's our intent, that's fine. The whole process will be done by third parties, the engineering design work, addition to quality control, quality assurance. But Adam, as a city engineer, is still responsible for the overall outcome of the two A project, so-
Right.
He has oversight of these individuals.
Right.
So you will be modifying the language.
Clarify.
Of two.
Number two.
Number two.
Yeah.
So, when we do have our special meeting on Wednesday, if, let's say, we decided to reject this new concept of the merge of Keywood and A and S, would we be able to in turn vote on this new Resolution Number Five?
Yes.
On Wednesday?
I think we probably need a week's time to see whether we can bring to reality this concept that's being proposed. We think has a lot of merit. The council should seriously consider it. At the end of the day, you'll make a decision. And if you choose not to, we haven't lost much time. We could put this right back on the track. The only downside is if we go with the proposed resolution, the design, bid, build, we probably can only do two of the four roads scheduled this summer. If we go the alternative route of this proposed partnership, we can do them all. Just so you're aware of that.
I have a question for Catherine.
Sure.
Yep.
Is it, is it legal and allowed to make such dramatic changes to a bid in the middle of the bidding process?
Under these circumstances, yes. Under any other circumstances, we'd have to address that. But since the parties are working together, they're consenting to this process, basically, so.
So, my next concern is I am not under the impression that they're, both parties are under consent and willing and excited to pursue this joint agreement. So I'm a little bit timid about-
Sure.
This conversation.
You'll have the opportunity, both of the parties will be here on Wednesday at five o'clock, so I'd ask that question to them directly. It's our understanding they are, that's why we're recommending this. If someone's changed their mind, they need to tell us that on Wednesday.
Well, we do have some of the parties here tonight. Do you want to address council?
Do you want to do it tonight or do you want to do it Wednesday? All we're doing right here is proposing the use of design, bid, build process on the two A improvement projects. I don't think we're discussing the merits of any future conglomeration or not of the possible using parties.
And I do, and I agree with that, except for that our, our vote on this, Resolution Number Five, is very contingent on the future and probability of this alternative.
Could we just, like we asked council on our retreat, ask a simple question? Are they, or are they not interested? And if they're not interested, we can proceed to adjust on-
Five.
Resolution Five.
Yeah.
If they're interested, we don't discuss it, we talk about it on Wednesday. But if they're not interested, we know where we need, we need to go.
So, are you asking me to just ask the parties that are present whether they want to come to the microphone and discuss that possibility?
But they're both not here.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
We have a signed statement from a representative of Keywood, but we don't have one from A and S. And my question is, has this memo been sent out to both parties?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, ask them to come speak for themselves.
Okay.
They can represent themselves.
Would you care to talk at this time, Mr. Ari?
John Ari, owner of A and S Construction. Do you need an address, or?
No, I think-
You're good. So, we are still in conversations. Our legal teams are still looking at it. That's where we're at. We have been approached by Keywood. And that's really all we're probably prepared to say at this time. We're still trying to get the details figured out.
Okay.
Mostly the legalities.
Can I ask, are you kind of in the direction that we're talking about with regards to both of you working out something that's equitable to both of you? Is your conversation right now in that focus?
Our conversation is very small and based on trying to get the streets done this year. There's the, we lack the details of understanding how the pricing structure will be set up for the taxpayers.
But right now, you're starting on that road.
Well, we're, we're, just what I said we was, we're in conversation at the very beginning. I told them that we had a, a issue with how it would be priced. Because we put prices out on the street for what we said we could do the work for. And I'm not interested in doing the work at a higher price than what we told the taxpayers we would do it for.
Thank you.
I have a question.
And the other big half is we're still trying to understand the legalities of it.
So, I have a question. Is it okay?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you have that prepared by Wednesday? Would you have a decision made by Wednesday?
Oh, I think so. We were waiting to see what council was going to do.
Okay.
We would suggest, to cover all our bases, that we have this discussion on Wednesday with A and S and Keywood. But just as a backup, we'd recommend you put Resolution Five back on that special meeting agenda. So we lose no time.
Yeah, that was my concern, I don't want to lose, we've, you know, we already have some streets in jeopardy.
As amended.
Yeah, yeah, as amended, as corrected.
Then it wouldn't be on the agenda for this Wednesday, it would be a done deal tonight.
No, no, no. We're suggesting that this resolution be put on the same agenda of Wednesday, April eighteenth at five P.M. So it'd be two items, the potential-
Okay.
Partnership and then this as a backup in case it doesn't perceive, you don't perceive it to be in the best interests of the public.
So then it's a pleasure of council, we do not vote on Resolution Number Eleven tonight.
No, so, does that need to be in a form of-
Yeah, why don't you do a motion to table it to that meeting?
So we can put it on the agenda.
Would someone like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we table Resolution Number Five, Series of two thousand eighteen, until April eighteenth, two thousand eighteen.
At the special meeting?
At the special meeting.
Second, Mr. Hammick, thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
With, with the agreed-upon modification to item number two, page one.
Okay.
Can I, if I've got some grammatical issues, should we discuss those now?
Sure, it's a good time.
Okay. In the third paragraph, second line, where it says it would be prudent, advisable, faster, and cost-effective, I'd suggest adding an Oxford comma after faster, between faster and and. And then in the next paragraph, second line, same issue, prudent, advisable, timely, I'd add a comma there after timely. In the next line of that same paragraph, it says, "By city's traditional method", I'd suggest adding the between by and cities. And then, one, two, three paragraphs down, third line, starts with economic, quality assured, I'd add a comma there between assured and and.
Is that a regular comma or Oxford comma?
Those are all Oxford commas, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to clear that up.
That's the new grammatical way of inserting commas.
Okay.
Well, it's not new, but it's been used more.
Where are we now? Are we going to add those? Can you amend your, who made the, the? You made, will you add those?
I would like to include in my motion of tabling Resolution Number Five, Series of two thousand eighteen to April eighteenth, two thousand eighteenth, with the suggested amendments and changes.
Okay. Mr. Hammick, you did say, is that okay? Any other discussion? Well, we're getting kind of late down here. We're at the discussion part. Is it the pleasure of council, you want to let this gentleman talk?
Is it something-
If I can make a recommendation, I would save any conversations to Wednesday.
Yeah, let's leave it alone.
Would you mind?
Let's leave it alone.
We'll have to.
Add something to the agenda?
I just, I sent a letter to council today.
Okay. Well, we're not, that's a letter, we'll-
I'd like for it to be open and discussed come Wednesday. If we're going to, if we're going to have discussion on two A. All council and mayor have it.
You know, I hate to see us deviate from what we have decided to have retrieved.
Yeah, you have a motion on the table.
Yeah, we need to go ahead and finish the motion. Thank you. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammick.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Councilmember Dorito.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And Josh, and just for a matter of business, we, we will pay attention to your letter and we'll address it accordingly.
Could council send the staff the letter and the city attorney so we can make it a public record? We'd like to review it, too.
Who got it? I don't have it.
We didn't get it.
I do not have it.
I got it. I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Number twelve, Saint Scholastica Plan Unit Development Agreement. Does he authorize the mayor's execution on, mayor's execution? No, I don't like that at all. Mayor's, authorize mayor's execution on six twelve Pike Avenue Development Agreement for Saint Scholastica. How about signature instead of execution?
Signature sounds great.
Okay, that sounds better, all right. Ms. Swetlick, go ahead.
So, mayor, members of council, typically this is something that might be in the consent agenda, but given the new members of council, that may not have had some of the history with this site. We thought we'd pull it out and provide just a little bit of a background and update. So basically, this is all about authorizing the mayor's signature on the development agreement. A little bit of background, on September twenty-third of two thousand seventeen, city council rezoned a portion of the property located at six one five Pike Avenue, commonly referred to as the Saint Scholastica property. This is approximately a seven point five acre site. A condition of the rezoning was the submission and approval of a planned unit development plan, which is a, basically sort of an overlay zone as a component to the city's zoning code or zoning ordinance. The project owner requested and staff concurs that prior to the submission of and approval of the PUD plan, that he receive a building permit for the first building on the site. And that first building is still, in their minds, renovation of the dormitory building, which is on the south side of the site, but a three-story building that's in sort of a wide V shape. So, that dormitory building would be allowed to have their permit issued and begin construction, but they would not receive their certificate of occupancy for that building until a preliminary PUD application has been submitted to the city and deemed complete as an application. And then it's also just important to note or follow up that no further development subdivision or building permits would be granted for that property until city council approves a final PUD.
As I was looking at this, I saw some curious language. I, it's number I. I've just never seen that in there. Is there, or maybe Catherine could answer, it talks about government immunity?
Uh huh.
What, why did, is that in there for something I'm missing, or?
So that's just the standard boilerplate we put in most agreements that the city signs. Yep, really.
What, what number five?
I.
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 I just, I don't, maybe I must have missed it, I just never saw it before. So, Dina, it's, this is, allows this gentleman to go forward and get that huge building worked on.
Correct.
But it will not allow him to let it be occupied.
Correct. Until the preliminary PUD application is submitted and deemed complete by staff.
And he's signed this?
Yes, he did.
Yes, he did.
Yep.
All right. Any questions of council? I'm sorry, I jumped out there. Go right ahead.
I, five something. Fundamentally, I agree with the concept of the agreement. As I communicated with Tony, this is, this, this city has a history of trying to accommodate people without specific deadlines that defaults back to council. And then we wind up with a black eye and Adam winds up with two black eyes. But I just feel like there needs to be a deadline on this thing. Is it possible or is it practical? I mean, I don't want to be back here in five years still dealing with the issue.
Wouldn't his building permit run out?
Well, there, I mean, given the size of this building, I'm not sure what the timeframe would, would be if a timeframe on the building permit. I mean, I know that the, the owner has been working and is hoping to submit plans for that first building, for the dormitory, as soon as they are able to. I know they've been working diligently on doing plans for that. They took a little bit of a break and actually focused on the historic building for a while and did some schematics on that building to see if that might be their first phase. But they ended up deferring and going back to the dorm building as their first phase, which is what they were originally talking about. So they are working towards getting a hundred percent construction drawings ready for a submittal and an application submitted to the city.
The time generally on the construction is pretty much geared by the bank. They're going to have several million dollars out there. It's the same way on a house. I mean, but the bank, I can tell you from being sometimes a builder, they want you to have it done in a certain period of time. They're giving you money.
My, my concern is, the black eyes that we've received since I've been here are fundamentally because there were deadlines in the information that staff tried to work with the customer. But it, those issues were never to a point where the agreement said we're at a, a stop point, this needs to go back to council and council needs to decide, what are we going to do? And if those other agreements had that checkpoint in them, I may run for a second term.
I'm not, but do you?
I mean, surely when he gets done with the agreement, he's going to say, hey, it's going to take me eighteen months, thirty-six months? I mean, whatever he tells us.
So I think if, and a good way to look at this perhaps is, so we, by virtue of this agreement, we are in a way putting a timeline in place. We can't necessarily put a timeline in place for somebody who now owns land, right? They own their land and they have the zoning and right to develop that parcel, particularly that dorm building under the R-three zoning. And we can't impose a timeline on renovating that building.
I'm not, I'm not expecting that. I'm expecting the timeline on this agreement.
Council, I would suggest two years. Put a fuse of two years on it, that's a reasonable timeframe. And if it's not completed, it has to come back here. There's nothing that hurts the developer, puts pressure on him to deliver in that two-year window. If he does, then he has to come and explain his situation to you before you extend that privilege. Because this is a big privilege, to be granted a building permit without the PUD being completed. He knows that. So, you know, you, you should control some of the conditions here. And I think a two-year time fuse would be prudent.
Something. Thanks Frank. Two, two-year time fuse to accomplish what?
The construction of the building just prior to getting a C.O.
Right.
Because he won't get the C.O. unless he's completed the preliminary PUD application to the city. So, he has to work on both those fronts. Clearly, you can do a PUD within two years. Question of the building, it puts pressure on him to start moving. Or he has to come back here to get your permission to continue. He'll probably be halfway through.
It takes pressure off of staff.
But I think it's a good point.
It puts the pressure back on, I mean, we're the ones that are making the waiver.
Yeah.
And then staff are the ones that kind of have to deal with it and, and work somebody through it. If we're the ones cutting the deal, if the deal doesn't get done by a certain deadline, it needs to come back to us.
For, and I don't mean to push back, but I'm going to push back just a little bit. Come back to you for what?
Yeah, what are you going to do?
That, I'm a little, so we're kind of venturing into a territory where we're venturing into takings a little bit here with imposing restrictions on the use of someone's property. Dina was kind of alluding to this, where they have the right to do this. If, and, and you have to be pretty careful about what you do. And if he's coming back, how are you evaluating that? Like, if he's halfway through, what are you, what are you going to do? Say, that's it?
He would have to stop the project and complete a PUD and then move forward.
Because the fundamental condition for the rezoning was the submission of a preliminary PUD. That's what would be required of almost all developers. In this case, you're permitting him to build part of his project despite the lack of a PUD. That's a big risk on the city's part.
The PUD?
But it allows him to create the cash flow to pay for the PUD. It's not an inexpensive process, it allows him to be viable, so it's a win-win scenario. But I think you're right, there needs to be some constraints on performance.
And it's only relative to this document. I mean, he didn't have to shut down the site. But this document that gave, that gives him a waiver for the PUD, and the PUD was very critical in approving that whole thing.
And the, the thing about this, the issue here, the reason why this works is because he's agreeing to what this condition is. That's why it's not a takings. So if he comes back and he's only halfway through in two years, you can't impose a condition without venturing into the takings territory. That's my concern. This is a voluntary agreement. Otherwise, we wouldn't be sitting with an agreement in front of you, you'd just be imposing conditions. So that's my concern, is that when he comes back, what exactly are you doing and what exactly are you looking at?
Catherine, can I ask a question? If he, if he did the dormitory and nothing else on that property, would a PUD still be required?
That's a better question for Dina.
He couldn't, because he would need a, he would need a-
He couldn't develop the rest of the property, correct, Dina?
No, but I'm just saying, if theoretically-
And he wouldn't be able to subdivide the property.
Theoretically, if he wanted to leave the rest of the property intact as it sits and do just the one building, would he be legally and within his rights to do that?
Yes.
But then he would either have to hold, hold the property as is and only have the one viable building developed, or he would have to sell the entirety of the parcel. He wouldn't be able to subdivide the parcel and keep the dorm building.
So, by that, by that definition, I mean, he's using the property within his rights. He hasn't been granted a subdivision, he hasn't been granted a PUD. He's using the property within his, within the boundaries of what it's allowed. I mean, I, I liked, I, I love the concept of being able to impose a timeline, but we're not really giving him anything at this juncture.
Yeah, we are. Yes, we are.
Well, we're allowing him to get a building permit on a property that he should be able to get anyway. Am I incorrect?
Not until you complete the PUD. And that process takes at least a year.
But I'm saying, if he never completed the PUD, if he had just bought the property and said, I want to do this with the dormitory and nothing else but have open space, he would be within his rights, correct?
Well, it depends, because the, the way the rezoning, right? So the, where the dorm building sits was not originally zoned R-three. He would have not been able to renovate that building and do what he wants to do with it under the previous zoning. That's why he undertook the entire rezoning process.
Okay.
Part of that rezoning process, the, the package for that rezoning process included the PUD because the city didn't, wanted to assure that the rest of the site would not sit and that he would only do the dorm building and then leave the rest.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that clarification, Dina.
I just have a question, I think it might be for Adam or Catherine. Can we just require an evaluation period in a year to see where he's at?
Well, the, I mean, the evaluation period will be if he has submitted a set of plans, whether he started the process. I mean, the absolute first step is he still needs to abate the building.
Right. And I think that's our concern, is, is he moving forward with the process? If he's, if in a year from now, he's still stuck in the same spot, then we might be within our rights to say?
No.
No?
He can keep going for ten years.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, this is him, this is him coming and saying, I'm, I'm going to move forward as long as promised. That's why he signed the agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're making a mistake by putting some timeline. I, to what avail? What are you going to do? You're going to go ahead and irritate him and in two years he walks off and you got the same mess that you got right now? Come on, come back on my planet a minute. I think it's crazy to do that. I think to leave it the way it is and let's move forward.
I think that would prove that we were being business-friendly.
I believe that since he's come to us and he's been forthcoming so far, I would be in support of just keeping progress moving on that.
So we're at what? What do we, we don't have anything to approve?
Just need to decide whether you're authorizing the mayor's signature in the agreement or if you want to amend the agreement.
Does that need to be voted on?
Yeah, I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Saint Scholastic planned unit development.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion?
No, no, never mind, go ahead.
Are you, you, Frank, were you contemplating, or?
I second the motion.
So, okay. How would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dorito?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no.
Okay, thank you all. Is there anything else for the, for the cause you would like to talk about? If not, we're adjourned.